Thank you for the blessings that you've given us. We pray that you will go with us and direct us, that you will be with us as we tend to school's business. We just pray for the people in our community and in other communities that need you in a special way today, Father. Amen.
I appreciate you all here and hopefully this information of God for you this evening will help inform you and maybe others in the community as we go out and share the good word of Iowa ISB. The presentation I have for you tonight is our proposed final budget. On August 13th, we approved our proposed budget, posted for 10 days, and within that time, we even had an additional board workshop. So, as we go through this, please be aware that the board and I have met a total of at least seven hours as we've reviewed our revenue and our expenditures for the 2018-19 school year. The first slide we'll start off with, most slides are going to have, if you look here, estimated revenue for 2017-18. That's the year we're closing out, and this is our projected for this next school year that we've just started. Revenue, if you will, for lack of better terms, is our income. That's the money we're getting in to pay our bills to support our programs. Local is our, from our tax values, and a little bit of other things like gate receipts and things like that at athletic events. And then state is what TEA sends us. So you see there's an increase across here in our local revenue, and that comes from a $35 million increase in our adjusted taxable values. So amen for that. This little increase right here comes from a slight increase in our average daily attendance, which if you hear the school people talk about it, they're going to say ADA. So our ADA, also our WADA, which is weighted ADA, and that just has to do with which services certain kids receive. So if they receive special services, the state funds us more for those students. So you can see last year's estimated revenue and this year's projected revenue, there's an increase of right at $559,000. A good thing for us. Just real quick, this is so you see most of our funding comes from our local values, and this is what comes from the state, from TEA. When you hear that school districts in Chapter 41 have to pay recapture, what you'll see is hardly, almost no red at all. So, we're still good. We're not in a red in recapture. Expenditures, again, lack for better term bills. This is what we're paying. You're going to, as I go through this, you're going to see it's categorized in six different groups, the first being instruction, and these are what these numbers here, what we call functions. So instruction, instructional resources, media services, and curriculum. Again, last year's estimated and this year's projected. When you see a slight increase like, this is just a couple of thou-, not a couple of thousand, a couple of 10,000. When you see that, what's going on is we spent seven hours going over years' worth of expenditures and trying to find that average to make sure we budgeted correctly so there's no overspending. We wanted to make sure there's enough money in each one of these functions. So that's what's happened there. Same thing here, and this has gone down significantly because this is a position that we have gotten rid of in the district. It was a position that Ms. Harris had, and she was our, let me use the official title, she was our federal grants coordinator. So when Ms. Butler, the high school counselor, left at the end of last school year, we moved Ms. Harris back over there, and that, ooh, that is a, where'd it go? That is a position we've completely cut from the district, and so that's why you see such a savings there. It has to do with personnel. So again, in instruction, you can see there's an overall decrease in spending. Instructional support, school leadership, this is our campus principals, their supplies, their travel, there's lots of it that goes into that as such, just their pay. So you can see this decreased significantly. Guidance and counseling services, again, it's our counselor salary, and their supplies and their travel and dues and fees. Health services, this is our nurse, and all our first aid equipment. And then co-curricular, 36, extracurricular activities. You can see this increased exactly $24,805. So typically in the community, that's, we're spending more money on sports. I want to share with you that we are not doing that. What you see here are the things that have increased in function 36. This is what was budgeted last year, and like I said, after spending seven hours with these great people, we realized we did not budget correctly for these things in 36. So we budgeted correctly. So you can see we're talking about UIL academic coaches, that's all we were putting in the budget, but we pay a stipend that equals this. Game officials, we had budgeted $12,000 last year, and it was over $15,000. Again, not budgeted correctly. So if you go through here, you can see the things, academic meet, well, this is the one I like to point out, travel for UIL academic students. We were budgeting $400. Last spring, we sent, I think, nine students to UIL Academic Regional Meet in Corpus Christi. Well, $400 is not going to cover that expense for that number of students going to Corpus Christi. So I wanted to share that with everyone so you could see, and I'll leave it up here in just another second. But that's why there's an increase in function 36, extracurricular, co-curricular. It's because we as a team of eight, that try to make sure we budgeted correctly so we don't go over in any of those functions, or any of those line items. So I said, like I said though, there was a difference of $24,805. The reason that doesn't equal out down here is because we had Coach Kapczynski, who was an assistant coach across the board last year, that she left, and Coach Freaky is now here and is a head coach of the sport. So it's the difference in their stipends that would make up the rest of that $24,805. Hope that all made sense. There's a lot of information up there. Central office, this is everyone that's housing this building here, so it's myself, Ms. Fochin, Ms. Tim, Ms. Marks, Ms. Hurst, and it's our salaries and our supplies and so forth. You can see another, ooh, I keep pressing the wrong button. Another decrease from last year to this year. District operations, again, transportation you see, operations, security and monitoring. Let me tell you what these, what go into these for 52, it's not just our SRO, it's security at football games, at basketball games, athletic events. It's our drug dogs that come once a month. It is our drug test, not our drug testing, I'm sorry. It's our Raptor sign-in system, so when you come to the school and you have to scan your ID, that, the fee for that system comes out of this function, and our SRO does come out of it, but that's not the only thing that's in that amount of money. And data processing, there'll be a region service center, region six service center, we have services they provide for students, we have services they provide for teachers, staff, especially our business office, and this is our text system, which is our student database. So that's what goes into this number here. This has decreased just a little, not a whole lot, but the reason this decreased some is that we're not driving to the edges of the earth to play football this year. So we don't have to travel to the Gulf of Mexico, we don't have to travel to Louisiana. So we felt like we were safe by budgeting that amount of money for fuel. The student transportation covers our kids getting to school, home from school, and fuel per hour at the curriculars. Debt services, this is our bus payment. We've got three new buses, now including this year, three years ago. So this is our last bus payment that we will make this year. So hopefully next year's budget will increase by at least that much. And these two items, this one here is our specialized COOP, Brownstown COOP. So this is off a little bit, a little bit, there's a big difference there, but it's because we budgeted correctly again. Specialized COOP will send us a bill for how much we're going to have to pay them. So that's why it's budgeted that way. We know we're going to get charged that amount of money. And the same thing down here, this is Brownstown Appraisal District, so they process our taxes and keep us afloat, and we know that that's what they're going to charge us for this year. So we don't have any option on these two. We're told this is what it's going to cost us, and so that's why we budget that amount. So total expenditures, what you see here, this is realized, so this is what we actually spent this past school year, and this is what we're projecting to spend for the new school year. So there's a difference of about $95,000 there, we're hoping to spend last year. Our tax rate, you can notice per $100 of taxable value. Our M&amp;O, which is really everything we just talked about, is locked in at $1.4. It's probably been $1.4 for many, many years, and it'll stay or remain $1.4. INS is the tax rate that we have to submit in order to get our bond payment for this school year. So our bond payment changes from year to year, but this is the tax rate that Brownstown Appraisal District tells us will generate our payment for our bond, bond payment this year. And so you can see from 2017-18 to 2019, our tax rate likely increases about 3 cents. Again, summarizing that. Okay? That's what I have for you. Questions about this year's budget? Thank you. Appreciate it.
I have a question.
Yes, we have.
Do we operate in a balanced budget, or do we have a surplus of money, or what?
This budget that I just presented on for this year, it is projected at an excess budget of $44,000.
Excess, meaning?
If we budgeted correctly, and so we received the revenues we're hoping to get, and our bills are about what we're projecting them at, we would have $44,000 left over at the end of this school year.
I think she's talking about to begin the school year. Does that always start them?
No, to operate the whole year.
$44,000 in the black.
In the black.
After all the bills are paid.
Yes, ma'am. That's what we're projecting for the 2018-19 school year.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
The actualized expenditures for 2017-18 were 4.83 million, and our revenue was 4.3 million.
Projected revenue was?
The projection revenue.
That was not realized revenue.
I was going to ask you, do we have a realized revenue? Because that shows 500 grand negative.
I do. I don't have it on me.
Okay.
But I can tell you that first slide, that was projected.
Okay.
And our realized is actually a little bit higher than that.
Okay.
I used projected on that other slide because I was presenting projected for this year.
Okay.
And I used realized for this one, so we're showing what we're, what we actually spent, what we're hoping to spend. Would you like, do you mind if I email you that?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. I'll get that to you. Okay. Thank you all very much.
First one, Mike Tijer, second, Karen. Motion to carry 7-0. Called over, a regular meeting for the Iowa Elementary School District. We do have people signed up to speak. I'll just go in order, Team Tijer on here first. Are you familiar with the, what you need to stay away from, like you can't be mentioning specific teachers and things like that? And you have five minutes to speak.
Yeah.
Claudia.
Okay. I'll ask them.
No, you got to go ahead. You're right. Okay. It says, "I'm a taxpayer, citizens of Brownstown with Iowa School District. I have children in the school, and I work in the leadership. I cannot attend the board meetings. I admit, embody this anonymous, and I have asked someone to read it on my behalf because I'm afraid of revelations against my children and spouses' business. For opening, sharing my opinion." What that said was right, is something that I never thought that I would have to do. Iowa ISB has always prided themselves on taking care of the financial obligations. I myself have always have pride in my children's school district as I listen to my fellow coworkers complain about theirs. I talk about our district and how I was so impressed with it. I talk to my people, to many people each week that are moving into our area for new jobs, and I would boost about our school district and encourage them to move into our area. Now, I only have, hang in my head in shame and disappointment. People moving into our area now have Iowa on no list for school district. What the heck, I'm not going to say it right, what the heck happened? Upon talking, talking to fellow community members, many of them blamed the past superintendent saying it was that they had been told by people associated with the school, "That's easy to do when no one's longer here." Use him as an escape vote for your lack of taking responsibility. Never, ever trust a single individual with something doing so important as our school's financial as well-being. That there not been any lessons learned through the past events that we cannot and should not follow someone with such a blind faith. How many school district complaints on individuals have lost, lost everything that they have worked so hard for by blindly trusting someone that thought knew that they were doing. Don't just, just, don't just, don't make, you know, make no sense. Some of you are new to the board, and to you, I say perk up and pay attention. Ask questions, request information if you don't understand something asked. Ask your fellow board members, ask your TEA, or even Google it. Check and double-check everything that you are told. The board members that have been actively seated since the start of the newest administration, shame on you for allowing our school to take such noise and nose dive. From what I can tell, not only that our financial status tanked, but our students' test scores have tanked as well. You have children and grandchildren here, or you're not worried? The honesty should be, should be unless there is something you're not telling the rest of the community in the case. Community members is the time that we start taking an active role of our school district. Quit talking and complaining about our current administration and school board members, and do, and do something. Put your money where your mouth is. That is my challenge to you.
Thank you. And for everybody speaking tonight, because of the Open Meeting Act, Open Meeting Act, we can't discuss anything you say. It basically always has thanked you and moved on. So don't think we're being rude or not paying for your services. Mr. R., you were next on this.
My main concern is the budget. Been here a long time, been very involved in this school, not so much after I retired. But when I look at the estimated revenue, if I got this correct, we're going to get $500,000, $559,000 surplus, or coming from somewhere. Where will that come from? Where will this $500,000 come from? Oil and gas is down, I don't know that TMPA is paying much, but where will, where do you expect this money to come from? Is it going to come from taxes, or?
Because it's not on the agenda, we can't have an open dialogue with you regarding that.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry, this is my first board meeting I've ever attended, so, but I am concerned about the budget. We can't operate without money. You know, the doors will be closed if we don't have money. So please be very conscientious about this, and I'm not sure where this $500,000 is going to come from because I don't see it occurring in the community. There's no progress here that I can tell. So I'm not sure what's going on in this figure, but you have, and also too, I'd like to know if there's any one item in the budget that has increased this year over last year. I know you can't communicate with me, but that needs to be looked at too, because I think we need to try to keep our spending down. Thank you.
I would encourage you to, to come talk to Mr. Martin, Dale get those.
I'd like to, I'd like a copy of that, what you present, because I would just quickly write in that now.
Okay.
My concern is also the budget. More specifically, I am a band booster and a band parent, and recently, Monday, as a matter of fact, the band was told that they could not participate in the first three away games because of budget cuts. In all fairness, there have been several email communications back and forth between band boosters and Mr. Martin Dell trying to resolve this situation. My main concern is before the band boosters were contacted and asked, "Can you help with this?", the band kids were told, "You can't participate." The volleyball girls have never been told that, the basketball boys and girls have never been told that, the football boys will never be told that. So to go to a group of kids and tell them that you cannot perform your craft is bullying, and there's a zero tolerance for that here in Iowa. You don't age out of it. If there are budget cuts across the board, then if one can't participate in three games, I think all of them should be nonparticipation for three games. Again, there have been several communications, and there was an attempt to make an agreement for, the school board had said, "Okay, okay, we'll find a way to pay for fuel if you'll pay for food." There was also a communication that said, "Look, band didn't lose any money." So on Monday, we didn't have the money. Earlier today, you said you would find the money. Earlier than that today, you said, "Oh, but look, we never took any money away from band." So it is crucial that the communications and the numbers that you're giving to the public are what you're going to come back to us with when we do argue a point, because none of us in this room are arguing a point to belittle you, to put you in your place, to win a war, to stomp our foot. Everybody in this room wants our kids to succeed, and wants the school to be successful. All of the schools, including the band, or whichever group is going to suffer next time and can't participate because we don't have the money. But later that day, you find the money. You can see where I'm confused. My main point is, if there's not enough money for Friday night football for three games, then they should all be canceled if they're non-district. Not a big chunk of the kids said, "You can't participate," but the rest of us are going to go do it. In this small community, you have to know that there's probably siblings who play football and band, and will have to participate in some way or another, or go and watch, but be sitting in the stands and not be able to play their instrument because the school couldn't afford to take them. That was my point. Where's the money? And please don't corner a group of kids and tell them, "We have enough money for everything else but money." It's not really the fair way to do it at all.
Karen.
So my address as well is regarding the budget and, and the band, because I am a band mom and I am on the band boosters. And it was a terrible blow to us being told that, as parents and as our students, being told that, "No, band's not going to the first three games because we don't have any money." Ms. Schuber did not say that. By the way, I do want to, you said, I couldn't say it, teacher, sorry. I wanted to make sure that, that's not what she said. That's what the kids said when they got home, was, and this is the conversations that are happening with the student body. It's a shame and embarrassment that the punchline to the entire student body at Iowa ISB is, "We are so broke." Dot, dot, dot. Fill in the blank. We have to unplug our computer parts overnight. We have to get rid of microwaves and mini fridges in the outbuildings. Oh wait, I know that our band cannot attend the first three football games. If you think that kids do not talk to each other, and talk to kids at other schools, and those kids tell their parents what a shame it is that Iowa cannot afford to send their kids to games, then you're kidding yourselves. Now, being told that the band budget had been cut by our band director, then receiving an email from our superintendent saying that the band budget has not been cut by one penny leaves things even more confusing. On top of all that, the band will be traveling less this year than last year, even if they go to all the games. The numbers are 714 miles round trip this year compared to 976 miles last year. With using miles per gallon numbers from the American School Bus Council and fuel prices from Stanley Feed, which are retail prices, and the school should be getting wholesale prices, the cost for band travel for this year would be $591.60. The budget numbers that the superintendent shared with me today states that the band has a travel budget of $1,100. This does not even include the meal budget of $2,500. So I'm still having a problem understanding why the band was told that they couldn't attend all games whenever, when we were being told that there's money in the budget in order to cover the travel expenses. That's it.
Okay. I think we've got it settled. We move to Iowa number three, considering the superintendent. Any questions? Did we have any?
There were, there were nine questions, not a consensus.
Can I add a motion? Prove this again. Motion by Tammy, accepted by Scott. So prove the consensus agenda as presented, those who voted, raise your hand. Those who voted, those who stated, motion to carry 601 of the majority abstaining. Item number four, campus administrative.
No, there isn't here someone. Go ahead.
Okay. So I'm going to give the campus a date for the elementary. We're going to start with enrollment. So last year in May, we ended the year with 296 students. This year, as of today, 314. So, you know, we've increased about a class size of kids. Something new that we're doing this year for our kids is we are going to be starting some character education programs. The first one is a continuation of a book study that the teachers did last year. So the teachers did a book study about being positive and overcoming challenges, and it was called "The Energy Bus." And then we learned they had a book called "The Energy Bus for Kids." So every week, the kids watch a part of the book that I'm on video reading to them, and every week, there's a rule that's featured. So like this week, the kids are working on creating a positive vision. It's all about setting goals for themselves and taking steps to attain those goals. The teachers are working with them on that. After that six weeks is over, then we will start a character education program for character counts. It's evidence-based, trying to build up our kids' character, even outreach into the community. So we'll be in touch with y'all about how you can help, you know, build our kids' character from there. Another, oh, these are my celebrations for our districts. Over the summer, one of our fourth graders and one of our fifth graders were selected to attend Camp Deerfoot, and it's a three-week-long leadership camp, and it provides challenges for personal growth, and then they teach those kids how to overcome those challenges. They kind of stage challenges and teach them skills. It's evidence-based, trying to build up our kids' character, even outreach into the community. So, we'll be in touch with y'all about how you can help, you know, build our kids' character from there. Another, these are my celebrations for our districts. Over the summer, one of our fourth graders and one of our fifth graders were selected to attend Camp Deerfoot and it's a three-week-long leadership camp and it provides challenges for personal growth and then they teach those kids how to overcome those challenges. They kind of stage challenges and teach them skills on how to overcome them, things that will transfer over into their daily life. Those experiences help the campers learn more about themselves, their relationships with others, their responsibility in society and their walk with God. Since those two kids have come back, we've seen a major difference in how they approach situations. Also, if they attend that camp every summer for four years, they earn a scholarship to Texas A&amp;M. Okay. So, we're gonna stay on them every summer that they're going. Also, it was not paid for by us. It was free. They earned a scholarship to go to this camp, so. Another celebration, I wanna feature our fourth grade teachers, Ms. Gisavas and Ms. Hamilton this year. They had a student who came to them speaking absolutely no English at all and they, both of those teachers have found really creative ways to meet the needs of that kid. And as of yesterday, the student was reading in English and comprehending everything he was reading. So, just a little sponge. Those teachers have really gone above and beyond for them, so we're very happy about that. Also, one other thing, I said I would share updates often about our fifth grade group considering it's the biggest, they have the most academic needs right now. And I asked them how their year was going, you know, how do you like having your three teachers, your smaller classes? So, I just wanna read some of these quotes from these kids. So, some of the kids said, it's less noisy and I don't miss them. As I get to ask my questions, it's not crowded, so I don't get annoyed with everyone like I used to. I haven't gotten into too much, into as much trouble and I feel more relaxed, so. Good news all the way around. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ross.
Okay, I'd like to share the secondary report and start off with, we had a great round of in-service and, you know, teachers helping teachers, preparing for the year, making things a better situation. But one of the things I did is I got to sit down with each individual teacher and some people might think that was crazy, let them come in and ask them, you know, the first question I asked was, what do you like about Iowa? And it's apparent in the room tonight, and the first thing they talked about was how much they liked being here, no matter what happened. They loved the small school atmosphere. They absolutely loved the kids and, as evident tonight, they love the community support. You wouldn't be here tonight if that weren't the case. So, those are the things that they liked. We also asked them about some of the things that would change about Iowa if they could. Very few of them had a lot to say. In the conversation, you know, we talked about it being a small school and small atmosphere and, you know, we always talk about it, you know, the same things that makes it a blessing makes it a curse. We love the small atmosphere and fortunately, because it's small, there's some things we can't offer other places, but there's a lot of things we offer here that you can't give anywhere else. So, that was a lot that the teachers had to say. Talking about that, our enrollment is drawn since this time last year on the secondary campus are seventh grades at 27 kids, eighth grades at 37, ninth grades at 38, 10th is at 33, 11th grades at 37, which I think is one up from what was in there last board meeting. And our 12th grade has 42 kids. It's a total of 214 kids. Last year, we started at the beginning of the year with 199 and we finished the year with 206, so there's growth taking place. Our volleyball team's off to a fantastic start. Our varsity is 19-1. Hopefully, that's the annual loss and we've got it out of the way already. JV's 13-3, freshmen are 7-1, the junior high's got started this week. Also, this Friday night, we have our first football game here. We play Somerville at seven o'clock, seven o'clock kickoff, not 7:30. And also, if any of your parents, if your kid starts saying things, there is a dance afterwards that the cheerleaders are sponsoring that will last from the end of the game until midnight. And then the last thing, with so many people in here and most of us either have kids, grandkids, whatever, just a reminder tomorrow is picture day, okay? It will take place in the high school gym. We'll start the elementary go-through, so if they try to get out in the morning wearing something that's probably less than desirable for pictures, make sure you remind them, hey, you got a picture today. It's also a good start.
Thank you, Mr. Ross. Superintendent Report, as you guys can see, what's important is what's going on on the campuses, in the classrooms, and that's off to a good start. I don't know if we shared with the board in late spring what Department of Public Safety, what DPS plans to be doing to increase school safety, but the deputies that patrol this area will be stopping in the schools when they can. So, the paperwork that they might normally do on the side of the road or in a parking lot or whatever will be done in our buildings, so their presence will be felt and will be seen. Another fantastic thing about that is the grounds coming sheriff's department is copying that and so they're gonna be with us whenever they can be with us as well. So, you're gonna have two different law enforcements walking around our halls, if nothing else, to let people know that this school, this school district's not a soft target. And so, that will increase school safety. Along the lines of school safety, there's the breechway area between this building and the elementary where the doors have always been locked. Our fantastic maintenance department has put a fence up on one side and a fence and gate up on this side, so our doors now can stay unlocked and our little ones can go safely back and forth and the fence and the gate keeps the bad guys out. But there's a gate there, so the classes will still exit the building that way to go to recess and come in from recess. That's worked so well. We plan to do the same thing at the breechway area between the high school and the junior high. You know, the back doors that go out by the gym towards the junior high, it is kind of set up the same way that we can put a fence and gate up there and so those doors can now be unlocked again and students can move safely and keep anyone that's not supposed to be in that area out. Again, sticking with school safety and talking about school pictures, we are having free IDs made this year. The photo Texas is giving us the faculty and student IDs. The movement's gonna be for the faculty to wear them all the time, so we know who's who and where they're supposed to be and that they belong. We're gonna encourage kids to do it this year, start practicing it, so maybe it's something we would go towards mandatory in 1920. Not this year, but if you see the ID and they have a manure, encourage them to wear it, please. I think that'll go a long way for our district's safety. We have board training tomorrow at eight to be held. The trainer's coming from the six service center and has requested that we be seated and ready by eight, so he's gonna be good to go. I will be out of district since the sixth at new superintendent training in Austin, so you'll know where I'm at. And parents, you'll love this one, Monday is a school holiday. Only a few people smile. So, that's all I have for superintendent report.
Item number five, consideration of the budget, 2017, 2018 budget.
Yes, you guys had those budget amendments or requested budget amendments in the beginning when we got here. I think you had a chance to go over it, hopefully you have, and it would be my recommendation that the board approves the budget amendments to the 2017, 18 budget as presented.
I would like to make a comment, but I'm not sure that the people know that we basically have to amend these, don't we? Whether we want to or not, we might not like what they are, but we have to amend them. Just because we're saying yes doesn't mean we like them, but we have to amend the budget.
Yes, no, that is correct.
Move to accept the amendments as presented. Motion. Second. Tammy to approve the amendments as presented, those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries seven oh.
If I can make one comment about that, as going back to presented budget, that's why some of that spending has increased, so that we don't have to make these amendments this time next year. So, that is the absolute goal whenever we try to set a budget. Will we pull that off? I don't know, but that's the goal, so.
Item number six, consideration of adopting the budget for the Iowa ISD 2018, 2019 school year.
That is the budget you guys saw presented tonight. It was a proposed budget presented August 13th. We had another three-hour board workshop. Nothing has changed from the proposed after the workshop, and so I recommend that you approve the budget for 2018, 19 school year as presented.
So, move. Second. Motion is second and is open for discussion. Any discussion on the proposed budget?
I, I'm not convinced that we will have a balanced budget next year. Sorry, don't think I can go for it.
Okay, those in favor, raise your hand. And opposed. Six to one, Karen opposing. Item number seven, consideration of adopting a tax rate for the Iowa ISD 2018, 2019 school year.
Okay. Again, this is the tax rate that was proposed on August 13th, the same one you saw towards the end of the presentation tonight. It is recommended that the board trustees adopt a 2018 tax rate at $1.04 for $100 for maintenance and operations and at .19408 for $100 for debt services for a total tax rate of 1.023408. The motion must be read.
Who wants to read that?
So, I made the motion that we approved the tax rate for the 2018 at the 1.04 and the operations, moving all that. I have to read it just like that. You have to read it just like that. Okay, so we wanna increase. Okay, so we wanna do the property tax increase by the adoption of a tax rate of 1.23408, which is effective, effectively a 4.53% increase in the tax rate.
Second. Okay, motion is second, open for discussion. Actually, what Daniel wants to fill in for.
It's the same thing in face every year.
Is that word?
It's the wording. What you guys saw tonight is it is a 3 cent decrease, but I don't understand the wording, to be honest with you, but it's that way every year. So, that's why we have to read it that way.
Any further discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries seven oh. Item number eight, consideration of approval of the local investment policy.
This is the Tasby Policy, CDA Local, that's presented annually and it designates your superintendent or some other designee as the investment officer under the district. This is what we discussed in the last board meeting and in the workshop, as local policies are written the way it is in this past annually.
And in the expenditures from the district, we see on a, or on a monthly basis.
Yes, so you do.
Move to approve the policy as presented.
Second.
Motion is second, my Louie. Any discussion?
I was the one that had concerns with this policy in the last meeting and like Mike said, it has been addressed that the board and the public will be provided more transparency from now on, so that we know what's going on. Everybody knows what's going on.
Absolutely.
Any further discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries seven oh. Item number nine, consideration of approval of the Tasby Localized Policy Manual Update 111.
In your board package, you had the vantage points for Tasby Policy Manual Update 111. To read and understand every word of it would require a law degree. I read through it and the one thing that jumped out to me, just to make everyone aware, is the school calendar. Again, we are required to have an instruction for a certain number of minutes per school year, which is 75,600. Question in the state of Texas has been, is that just, is that just instruction or is that the entire day? So, what people are asking is, does lunch count towards your 76,500? And this policy clears that up, that it is the instructional day, so it includes 30 minute lunch. And the rest of those had to do with everything from pest management to charter schools to insurance. So, it's in there in your package though for your leisure reading. So, I'd recommend that we adopt the Tasby Policy Manual Update 111 as presented.
Second.
Motion by Tammy. Second. Taken by Mike. Any discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries seven oh. Item number 10, I talked to Mr. Martindale about, the item on our agenda is consideration of approval of the 2018, 19 pay scales. Asking if we could table that and have a workshop on it sometime in October, November. So, that's my proposal, we table this until we can have a workshop on it. Move to table it. Motion to table. Second. Second by Scott. Any discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries seven oh. Personally.
We have no votes now.
One more. To adjourn. Tammy, to adjourn, Mike second. Those in favor, raise your hand. Thank you all.